All right, so we will begin with Board and Administrative Reports. First is Board Presence Report. I don't have one, so we'll start right up with the Superintendent's Good News Report.
Sure. Good evening, everyone, and for the Superintendent's Good News Report for September 28, 2016. Twenty-four juniors from Oshkosh area's high schools spent the first day of Leadership Oshkosh with a program for Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce, building relationships, trust with each other, and several activities. The program has been in existence for more than ten years, and it gives students a firsthand look at community challenges, opportunities, and resources. And this program, the youth program, parallels many of the activities that relate to the adult version of Leadership Oshkosh that is also sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and participating employers. Congratulations to Franklin Elementary School for being recognized as a School of Merit for Wisconsin's Positive Behavioral Interventions and support PBIS for the 2015-16 school year. Franklin students learned about the important skills on the topic of manners every other week and earned tickets for prizes if they demonstrate those skills. Matters teaches students about treating others with dignity and respect. Congratulations to Oshkosh West Senior Carolyn Morehouse, who is one of 34,000 students nationwide, recently named a commended student in the 2017 National Merit Scholarship Program for their exceptional academic promise. The students placed in the top 5% of more than 1.6 million students taking the 2015 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Webster Middle School families recently participated in their STEM night, where they had giant bubbles, held Lego races, and experienced health and hygiene experiences, and enjoyed ice cream, among other activities. Thank you to all those who made it possible, the STEM Outreach Program from the Oshkosh Corporation, and Fox Valley Tech, University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh, and Mike's Place. I know Mike's Place dedicates a lot with their food and restaurant business to our schools. We're so grateful to them. Smith Elementary School sends a big thank you to Steve and Sarah Eliason and the International Youth Sailing of Oshkosh, providing fifth-grade students with amazing experience on Lake Winnebago. And Smith is not the only one. We've got lots of those experiences. Franklin students had a great time on the water, sailing, kayaking, and paddle boarding. They learned so many useful skills, including how to be safe in the water, how to maneuver on a paddleboard and kayak, and how to steer a sailboat. Congratulations to South Park Middle School students for being named a School of Distinction for their work on PBIS. Congratulations also to Webster Stanley Elementary School to be named one of 162 schools of distinction for PBIS in the state. Webster Stanley Elementary PTO recently hosted a carnival event where families enjoyed games, face painting, touring a fire truck, and participating in the safe house. And lastly, activities of the superintendent during the past two-week period. With that completes my report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you so much. Are there any other reports by committee chairs?
Oh, Barb. Yes. Thank you. I have a report from the Policy and Governance Committee, which met last week, Thursday, September 22. We had several policies that were being reviewed that had come to us via the NEOLA process. NEOLA is a third-party vendor who provides drafts of policies, which are then shared with the administrative team, who then edit them before passing them on to Policy and Governance before they come here. We also had a brand-new policy. It's new to all of us, and we wanted to make sure that we provided for curricular needs as well as use of our grounds, our facilities, on weekends when perhaps there aren't activities going on. And that is related to the drones policy. That's a very new policy nationwide. And Stan had met with UWO Athletic Director Daryl Sims to discuss the creation of this policy so that our district would be in compliance while using UWO property. The policy lists the controls and restrictions and then finishes with exceptions to those restrictions. We may need to revisit this policy later, since it is such a new area for all of us, and there may be updates in the future. We also updated policy, which is now number 1230, the responsibilities of the superintendent. The previous policy had gone back to 1997. And what we've done is take the NEOLA wording, we've streamlined the policies, we've also aligned it with the Wisconsin Educator Standards for Administrators, not only to bring that policy into the 21st century, but also to align it with a more consistent evaluation process for the superintendent. We had, oh, I don't know, at least a dozen policies. They're on the agenda for tonight. They deal with things such as internal controls, cash management and grants, cost principles, the spending of federal funds, time and effort reporting, disposition of real property and of surplus property, membership of the board, organization of the board, board meetings, assessment of goals, board-superintendent relationships, the incapacity of the superintendent's school counseling, programs for students with disabilities, a least restrictive environment position statement related to special-needs students, library-media centers, school performance and accountability reports. We had about eight more items that we just didn't have time for, and those will be the items that we will deal with first on our next meeting, which will be Thursday, October 20, at 10:00 a.m. in this facility. And those meetings are open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Are there any other reports from committee chairs? Okay, we'll move on to the non-agenda-related public forum. I see we have one person here to speak on the non-agenda forum. So please come forward, your name and address.
Yeah, I will. Well, good evening. My name is Peter Serna-House, and I live at 1556 Hayden Drive here in Oshkosh. Had to think about that for a second. Okay? And by the way, Steve, congratulations. I was involved with a lot of those things when I was administrator here, and that's just a great, great program. So, thanks for all you do for the kids. Okay? And I'm gonna make this real quick. I was just thinking about something the other day, and first of all, for those that I do not know, I used to be a former administrator here in the district for about 17 or 18 years, retired back about six years ago, believe it or not. But I've been fortunate to still continue to work with the school district. And also during that time, I've also been fortunate to work with the university here in town. And that's kind of why I'm here about it, is it's kind of just an independent item I wanted to mention. And I kind of got thinking this after I was meeting with Lori the other day on some situations that we wanted to make sure that we were doing proper. And that is just to let everybody know, you know, as far as how much the school district is a great partner to the university in a number of ways. And, you know, I know a couple of you folks may, but what I am involved in through the university is placing students as an example that have to do their diversity hours. And this is a DPI requirement that they must do before they're accepted into a licensure program. Well, I'm placing, per semester, about anywhere from 100 to, this semester, 130 kids. And the majority of these kids are going into our classrooms here in the Oshkosh School District, which I think is just fantastic, due to the fact that teachers don't have to take these kids if they don't want to. But they're allowing these kids to come in, and of course, it is, you know, I'm looking at it as a win-win situation. But these kids come in, they got a lot of enthusiasm, these are basically your juniors in college, and they, you know, overall have done a tremendous job. But I do want to thank the school district, the administration, as well as the teachers, for allowing these students to do this, along with like the clinical placements, other class placements. I remember when I read, my last semester, I remember having 17 student teachers at Oshkosh West alone. So there's a number of different ways that the university is collaborating with the school district. And again, the teachers just love having these kids come in because it is a great thing for them, because it allows them then to focus on maybe getting extra help for the kids that maybe would fall through the cracks otherwise. So, again, I just want to thank the district for doing a great job in that sense. So, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Just to add to what Mr. Serna-House said, the use of, or the collaboration with UW-Oshkosh students was the topic of conversation at the recent All-City PTO meeting. And many of the schools shared how helpful it was to have volunteers from the university's students come and help with carnivals and all kinds of activities, in addition to working directly.
There's definitely a more of a call than I can supply, that's the problem.
Yeah.
But we've even taken it a step farther this year with the human resource area, where we have, I've had enough information at the university for college students if they wish to sub as a parent in our district. If they had a half a day, our district says here, gosh, we'll take them. And again, another great experience for these kids, because that's their goal, is to be educated.
Great collaboration, both sides. Thank you, Pete.
I would just like to echo the comments about the fabulous cooperation with the university. This school district would be a totally different operation if we did not blessed with having the university in our community and we being in the community with the university. It makes all the difference in the world to brighten every day for a child, but also for providing experiences for students, and that partnership across the board is truly appreciated. We should also note the fact that Mr. Serna-House, two weeks ago, was, a week and a half ago, was inducted into the Oshkosh West Athletic Hall of Fame, as having been deeply involved with athletics, both as athletic director on a part-time basis and as well as assistant principal at that time, and then moving into the principalship, but being recognized for all the support and encouragement and direction that he had provided for Oshkosh West athletes over those 17-plus years in the school district. And lastly, we've been so fortunate with greater stability with our principalship. I refer to Mr. Serna-House as our utility infielder, as a substitute principal, and the university has kept him so busy, and we've been fortunate having stability with our principal workforce. We've not been able, having to, need to call on him, but we appreciate Pete for his work every day. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board on a non-agenda-related public forum? Okay, how about agenda-related public forum? All right, seeing none, we'll go right into the Consent Resolution Agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item, or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. I have requests for eight, nine, and 10. Are there any others? Okey-dokey. All right, here we go. The board will consider approval of: One, minutes of August 24, 2016, regular board meeting; Two, minutes of September 14, 2016, regular board meeting; Three, bills payable; Four, personnel; A, appointments, resignations, and salary schedule; Five, tuition agreements between the NINA Joint School District and Oshkosh Area School District; Six, 2016-2017 budget; Seven, performance contract with McKinstry; Eleven, updates to school board policies; A, 6111, internal controls; B, 6112, cash management of grants; C, 6114, cost principles, spending, federal funds; D, 6116, time and effort reporting; E, 7300, disposition of real property; F, 7310, disposition of surplus property; G, 0143.1, public expression of board members; H, 152, officers; I, 160, meetings; 166, agenda; 167.1, voting; 167.2, closed session; 167.5, use of electronic mail; 167.6, email public records; J, 1110, assessment of goals; K, 1210, board-superintendent relationship; L, 1260, incapacity of the superintendent; M, 2411, school counseling; N, 2460, programs for students with disabilities; O, 2460.02, least restrictive environment position statement; P, 2522, library-media centers; and Q, 2700.01, school performance and accountability.
So moved.
Second.
I was gonna ask you if you could read those one more time.
Please call the roll.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lambert, aye. Olmsted?
Aye.
Olmsted, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliasin?
Aye.
Eliasin, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, so, starting with resolution number eight. Oh, let's see. Be it resolved that the area, I'm sorry, that the Oshkosh Area School District is exercising its taxing authority under S. 121.9140, Wisconsin statutes, honored before October 1st to exceed the revenue limit on a non-recurring basis by an amount the district will spend on new energy efficiency measures and energy efficiency products for projects in the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, this is my request. Actually, this is my first request of a poll of a resolution, so that's a red-letter day for me. I just think this is a pretty important thing, and there's a lot of mistaken thinking and misinformation out there. And if I start going off the track, somebody, you know, pull me back in if I'm wrong, but I think the biggest thing is that somehow this got called a loophole. And it's really not a loophole, it's a tool that the legislature gave school boards to address problems like, and energy efficiency and maintenance. And to not speak, oh, the previous school boards, but previous school boards, I'm going to do it, previous school boards were kicking this, beating this can down the road, and it was getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And now, you know, somebody had to address that, and that's what this is. Plus, it saves some money, because it's energy efficiency. I think the biggest mistake that people have in the budget, school budgets are massively intricate and very hard to understand. But I think people feel that there's just one big pot of money, and we just take it out when we want. And that's not the way it is. This can only be used for energy efficiency, we can't use it for anything else. And the referendum passed in April has to be used for what we said it's gonna be used for. So it's not available to spend however we want. So I think we would be, I'm derelict on our duty if we didn't take advantage of the tools that the legislature gave us to fix, help keep our buildings up to date, so.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
May I just add, Jim's comments are exactly right on. We are possessors of, among the oldest set of buildings in the state of Wisconsin, and the fact that our custodial maintenance folks do an excellent job of keeping them operational. But there are certain pieces that do not fit in daily in summer cleaning and maintenance and making them work. But for these efforts and that have been underway to bring our buildings up to date in spite of the age of their structure is a tremendous benefit for the safety, health, and energy efficiency for the size of the utility bills we pay as a result of all of these improvements. And I totally agree, the opportunity for the district to do these projects in the long run is savings, saving millions of dollars of building replacement that would have needed to occur had we not been doing these projects. And these are excellent return on investment, and we're really pleased that the state has granted this school board the opportunity to do this in a third phase now, and doing this to make sure that we do deliver on healthy, safe, energy-efficient buildings for our students.
Yes, sir.
Just to give you some historical perspective, when I got on the school board eight and a half years ago, we had $70 million of deferred maintenance. It had been kicked, the can kicked down the road, as Jim said. So I think, you know, I want to compliment administration over those years for working hard to erase that deficit, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
And I would just invite, if there are members of the community who would want to see the product of this massive work, we would be glad to give guided tours to show. The fortunate thing is that, unfortunate thing is, we can show you pictures of how it used to look, but we certainly can show you how the increased efficiency and the quality of the environments have changed in every one of our schools that are of the older generation of schools in the district.
Please call the roll.
Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lambert?
Aye.
Lambert, aye. Eliasin?
Aye.
Eliasin, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, number nine. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approved the new policy on manned aircraft drones, as filed with the secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I can start this one, if that's okay. I think there's some concern over the language as it came as a resolution tonight, and so it might be seen as contradictory, so.
I might suggest one line change that would occur that potentially could allow this to move forward, if I could call your attention to the second paragraph on the front of the policy, and that ends with, "The following shall apply." And if we inserted the language after that, "Unless modified by the exceptions listed," that would then effectively cover that, because the exceptions are all on the next page. And unless modified by the exceptions listed, it would no longer be contradictory.
Right.
And if we inserted that language, I think we could move it along without having to bring it back to policy and governance, and we would have the freedom for use, as suggested of that. And if all the parties would accept that, we, I've thought very seriously about how could we modify that without modifying every paragraph?
Right.
But if we, if we use the, inserted the words, "Unless modified by the exceptions listed," we'll.
Okay, so, can...
You need a motion to amend, which I'll do. I motion to amend the resolution to conclude the language that Mr. Mack has suggested.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, so will you please call the roll?
On the amendment.
On the amendment, yep.
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lambert?
Aye.
Lambert, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliasin?
Aye.
Eliasin, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, so now we'll need a motion for the resul, or will?
I have a motion.
Right, I'm sorry. Any more discussion?
I just wanted to thank those who have worked on this. As I noted earlier, this is new territory for all of us, and to bring together the activities directors, the high school principals, Mrs. Mosher representing curriculum, as well as Dr. Kim Brown, I think is really commendable. And one of the things that we discussed last week with the building principals present was to be sure that there are opportunities, appropriate opportunities, for our students to be able to use drones that are curriculum in nature and help advance their learning. So whether that's through a drone club, or that's in the classroom, we wanted to make sure that was provided for. We also wanted to make sure the health and safety of students was provided for, that they wouldn't be subject to these things buzzing overhead during recess or other times. And also to allow for the use of our facilities evenings, weekends, when there are not activities going on, and the public could use the ground. So this had many facets to it, and as I said earlier, we may need to revisit this in the future as the use of these expands, just like as the use of computers and Internet expanded over the last 20 years or so. This one may need to be revisited more often than in the next 15 years, it might be 15 months, or who knows? But I'm just really pleased with the way administration has brought this forward. School is underway, people want to use these, students want to use these, and so we wanted to make sure we covered all those facets that we could. Thank you.
And if I may comment, I really appreciate the cooperation of the university in working with us on this as well. It's another demonstration of our partnership of working together, and that they're supplying to us so that we can include in the distribution the policy restrictions that the university system has in place regarding the field that we use for soccer, boys and girls, as well as football, and on occasion, other sports activities that they provide us the opportunity, including occasionally track, but also softball fields.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, then we'll call the roll.
Lambert?
Aye.
Lambert, aye. Olmsted?
Aye.
Olmsted, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliasin?
Aye.
Eliasin, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, resolution number 10. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approved board policy 1230, responsibilities of the superintendent, as filed with the secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
I just wanted an opportunity, again, to thank those who had worked on this from the administrative side, to bring this forward. This policy is probably one of the oldest ones that has been revised, going back to 1997, and I'm just pleased that we're now into the 21st century, and that we can use this as a springboard to make our policy more consistent with the evaluation of the superintendent, and streamline the process and the number of specifics without getting into micromanaging-type details. So, thanks to administration for their work on this and fine-tuning it.
Thanks. Any other discussion? Comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Olmsted?
Aye.
Olmsted, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliasin?
Aye.
Eliasin, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lambert?
Aye.
Lambert, aye. Motion carried.
Okay. Next would be individually considered resolutions. There are none, so request for future agenda items. Did you have a request? No, no requesting. Okay, any announcements? Oh, yes, Barb.
I want to thank the students in Mrs. Williams and Mr. Quedno's class at Oshkosh North High School. I had a recent opportunity, not only to visit that class, but to have lunch with those students and interact with them on the job skills that they're acquiring out in the community. It was delightful. I hope that I get to go back again and interact with those young students again. There were about 12 of them in the class, they were delightful. A real credit to the work of the teachers who have gotten them to this point in their education. I also want to commend those who were involved with the new gym floor and the new bleachers at Oshkosh North High School. I had an opportunity last night to attend a girls' volleyball game there, and the wow factor when you walk into that fieldhouse is just amazing. The floor is beautiful, not that it wasn't before, but it just has a nice, brand-new look, and those bleachers with the word Spartan spelled out in them. And you no longer have to worry about wooden splinters if you're sitting in those bleachers, so it's a great improvement to the school and to the district. Thank you for, to all those involved.
All right, thank you. Any other announcements? of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, 19.851C Wisconsin statutes. A, consider employment performance of a public employee.
So moved.
Okay, please call the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliasin?
Aye.
Eliasin, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Olmsted?
Aye.
Olmsted, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.